All right, clear as mud. Here we go. So, starting with verse 6, "And he opened his mouth in blasphemies against God, to blaspheme his name and his tabernacle, that is, those who dwell in heaven." Actually, in talking about verse 5 also, "There was given to him a mouth speaking arrogant words, and blasphemies, and authority to act for forty-two months was given to him." So, I want to start there with 5 and 6. Keener points out, "The proud mouth is the sort of imagery that later fed into the Antichrist traditions, originally built around Antiochus Epiphanes, and those after him who would be like him." So, you can read about Antiochus Epiphanes, or Antiochus Epiphanes, Daniel chapter 7, verse 8, verse 20 and 25, Daniel 11:36, and then 1 Maccabees, chapter 1, verse 24. What's tacked on to that is, on the forty-two months, this happens to be the exact time of the desecration of the temple by Antiochus Epiphanes. What a coincidence, right? Daniel still called it a few hundred years in advance. So, "The identifying of the tabernacle with the righteous heaven-dwellers matches the Essene and early Christian picture of the righteous community as God's holy temple." So, that was something not just to the Christians, but also the Essenes, which was kind of their, its own group that had separated from the temple, was seeking to be the pure and righteous community that was going to, really, they were quite messianic in a lot of their writings. But, it's interesting that we have the forty-two months, the, also, the language of the apostles throughout the New Testament, of us being a part of the holy dwelling of God. So, all the language of your body being a temple, right? So, that is part of that. So, let's see, let's, some of the other verses here, so Daniel 7. You know what, it's been a few weeks since we read Daniel 7, let's go ahead and go back there now. Starting at verse 6, "After this, I kept looking, and behold, another one, like a leopard, which had on its back four wings of a bird; the beast also had its foreheads, and dominion was given to it. After this, I kept looking in the night visions, and behold, a fourth beast, dreadful and terrifying, and extremely strong! And it had large iron teeth; it devoured and crushed, and trampled down the remainder with its feet; and it was different from all the beasts that were before it. And it had ten horns. While I was contemplating the horns, behold, another horn, a little one, came up among them; and three of the first horns were pulled out by the roots before it; and behold, this horn possessed eyes like the eyes of a man, and a mouth uttering great boast." Great boast. And then, if you skip to 11, "Then I kept looking, because of the sound of the boastful words which the horn was speaking; I kept looking until the beast was slain, and its body was destroyed, and given to the burning fire." Then, verse 20, "And the meaning of the ten horns that were on its head, and the other horn which came up, and before which three of them fell, namely, that horn which had eyes and a mouth uttering great boast, and which was larger in appearance than its associates." And skipping down to 25, "He will speak out against the Most High." Actually, let me back up here, just getting into the interpretation. Thus he said, "The fourth beast will be a fourth kingdom on the earth, which will be different from all the other kingdoms, and will devour the whole earth, and tread it down and crush it. As for the ten horns, out of this kingdom ten kings will arise, and another will arise after them; and he will be different from the previous ones, and will subdue three kings. He will speak out against the Most High, and wear down the saints of the Highest One; and he will intend to make alterations in times and in law; and they will be given into his hand for a time, times, and half a time." We have one speaking the boastful words. So, the beast opens his mouth, this is from Mount to blaspheme God. This activity of the Antichrist is clearly portrayed in 2 Thessalonians, chapter 2, verse 4. "He will oppose and will exalt himself over everything that is called God, proclaiming himself to be God." That sounds just in line with what we read in Daniel 7, right? So, obviously, whether it's a celebrity, or a political official, or whoever, or your neighbor, anybody that's saying anything like this, that's some scary stuff. Really, we have a culture where we just don't do that, right? I mean, by and large, but blasphemies are coming, right? I mean, this is the thing, to be antagonistic, right? Towards, not just that God, but also followers of God. So, probably gonna see more of this. "The blasphemy of Antiochus, and the use of divine titles by the Roman emperors, would for John identify the Antichrist as the one in whom secular authority had assumed the mantle of deity." So, remember, we talked about that over the last couple of weeks. Look at the titles. "The expression 'to open the mouth' is frequently used at the beginning of a prolonged discourse, and suggests that the blasphemies of the beast against God were sustained." Ongoing. "The relationship among the several clauses in verse 6 is variously understood. If 'and' is read as the first word of the last clause, there are three objects of blasphemy: the name of God, his dwelling place, and those that dwell in heaven." So, three objects of blasphemy. The name of God, his dwelling place, and those that dwell in heaven. "To slander the name of God is to speak evil of all that he is and stands for." The name sums up the person. His dwelling place is his tabernacle. In chapter 21, verse 3, "A loud voice from the throne declares, 'Now the dwelling of God is with men, and he will live with them.'" Some people understand the blaspheming of God's dwelling place, his temple, as a reference to Caligula's attempt to set up his statue in the Holy of Holies. We talked about that last week. "But it is doubtful whether any historical allusion is intended. Those who dwell in heaven are either angelic beings, or possibly the church viewed ideally as seated in heavenly places." All right, verse 7. See, progress. "It was also given to him to make war with the saints, and to overcome them; and authority over every tribe, and people, and tongue, and nation was given to him." So, Keener says, "In Daniel, chapter 7, verses 21 through 22, an Antichrist figure, applied first to Antiochus Epiphanes, but necessarily reapplied to his successors in the role with which history is replete, waged war against the saints, the holy ones, and overcame them, until the day of judgment and the kingdom arrived. Nero burned Christians alive to light his imperial gardens at night, crucified others, and fed still others to wild beasts. They were his political scapegoat for a fire in Rome for which he and his boyfriend, Tegelinus, were being blamed." Domitian does not seem to have instituted an empire-wide policy of repressing Christians, but some later emperors did so. "Daniel spoke of all peoples, nations, and languages, including under oppressive rulers, and worshiping a false image. As in Revelation, the oppressive human multicultural empire contrasts with God's own multicultural kingdom." So, if you recognize that language in verse 7, "every tribe, and people, and tongue, and nation", well, you just have to go back to chapter 5, verse 9, "And they sang a new song, saying, 'Worthy are you to take the book and to break its seals; for you were slain and purchased for God with your blood, men from every tribe, and tongue, and people, and nation.'" So, this kind of piggybacks on what we were talking about last week, where everything that we're reading about these enemies, these beasts, is a perversion of what God, who God is, and what he has done, in even having God the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. So, that's the thing, like, we don't just read this to take notes of, like, what to watch out for. We have to be so about who God is, and what his mission is, so that anything that deviates from that, we recognize as being part of the Antichrist system. So, it's not just creating a resistance and fighting against the Antichrist. We have to be about the mission of God. It already says here that the Antichrist will overcome. He will win. He'll be winning until he's not. And, for some of us, as we read, it's until the Lord returns. That's kind of the general understanding, is that we're losing all the way up until Jesus shows up. So, now, there's different readings and understandings of timing and stuff, so, I'll just kind of leave that at that. So, from Mount, "Having described the proud words and blasphemies in the preceding verse, John now goes on to describe his exercising authority." The authority is described in two ways, first by making war against the saints, and second, by his demanding universal worship. To the beast was given power to make war against the saints and to conquer them. The first part of verse 7 builds on Daniel, chapter 7, verse 21. "Universal authority is given to the beast that extends over every tribe, people, language, and nation. Although the saints are to be conquered, i.e. put to death, by the beast, the real victory belongs to them. They are those who are victorious over the beast," chapter 15, verse 2. "In the crucial test of faith, they relinquished their lives rather than their confidence in God." In chapter 12, verse 11, we learn that they overcame the accuser by the blood of the Lamb. Let's look at that again. Starting at verse 10, "Now the salvation, and the power, and the kingdom of our God, and the authority of his Christ have come; for the accuser of our brethren has been thrown down, he who accuses them before our God day and night; and they overcame him because of the blood of the Lamb, and because of the word of their testimony; and they did not love their life, even when faced with death." So good. So, this is the true victory. The twice-repeated he was given, in verse 7 here, stresses the subordinate role of the beast. Because who's giving this authority? Anybody remember? The dragon. So, this is kind of coming from Satan himself. Is it Satan's authority to give? For this time. For this time. The prince of this world. That's what Jesus recognized, which makes the whole temptation even more powerful, that Jesus was staying true to the mission and call that he had. So, here, the dragon, the beast, is the dragon's instrument for revenge and operates at his bidding. Yet the reference goes beyond the dragon, and we are to understand that even this unholy alliance is under the control of the one in whom resides all authority and might. So, even though the dragon is giving that authority to the beast, the dragon is only operating within a very clear scope that is provided by God himself. This is only gonna happen for a time. So, that's where we get into, yeah, so you have the dragon, the beast of the sea, sea beast. I like that one. And then, the earth beast, right? And the earth beast is generally thought as the false prophet. So, then, this is the one that has the authority. So, if you want to think of the, the role of the spirit in connection with the false prophet, kind of giving voice and, yeah, so, pointing to the first beast. So, I think that would, I think that's how that would fit in kind of an unholy trinity, right? Oh yeah, I can't say that one, right? Unholy alliance of three, whatever. Remember, I wrote that on the board with a capital T? Lowercase t, so, all the difference. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, really, so as not to drag this whole study out for a few more years, you know, we could easily take a break and look at Daniel. And really, piece apart, you know, the, I mean, that's why I'm like, I'm not hesitating to go back and read from Daniel. But, it almost deserves its own in-depth, like, historical analysis of how we see that fulfillment happen. And hopefully, you're picking up on little bits of that along the way, as we talk about, you know, just like with the leopard, you know, in representing Greece. And there's mention of, you know, his feet. There's four of them, right? Oh, well, after Alexander the Great died, the Greek empire was divided up into four kingdoms. What a coincidence, you know? It's just all of these different things, and then, oh, it's the one with wings. Well, look how quickly he conquered the world. So, yeah, there's, the symbolism is all there, and it represents, and then we would get to the next one after that, it's just kind of like, whoa, what is this? And, you know, and that's where you're dealing a lot more with numbers. But, yeah, I mean, yep, no, absolutely. So, but, that's why it's good to understand what is said, and the principle behind it, right? And that's where, understanding what does an Antichrist system look like, and to avoid being so enmeshed in that that we lose ourselves. And I think that is like, one of the number-one concerns that John had for the believers of that time. But then also to recognize the limitations that the government had, do that, that we weren't called to compromise, but to take a stand for Christ, to continue living our lives, to love others, to share the gospel, take care of the poor, I mean, all of the things, right? In the name of Jesus, knowing full well that the government could bring in a period of persecution any day. And that's, you know, and that's a challenge for us, as we have dwelt in safety and security for the last few hundred years. And, and so, so then, that kind of leads us into another whole discussion, is as we're reading this, we project on it, like, oh, where are we in this as a country? But that's not fair. Because a lot of times, when we read it like that, we're either the good guy, or, depending on what you think of the country, we're the bad guy. And so then, you know, it's like, it's all or one, or all, you know, all or nothing, and, you know, and so, there's just this continual pendulum effect of moving from text to text, it's like, woo, well, how can my, the leader that just got elected that I don't like, how do they fit into being the beast from the sea? Because they are definitely directly from Satan. Like, but then, you know, you're looking at something, you know, I mean, how many other countries are reading that too? And that's a danger that we have to avoid demonizing somebody just because we disagree with them. And so, when we read Revelation, like, that's why there are some very clear markers. If somebody is calling themselves God, or they are greater than God, you know, I mean, woo, red flag, I don't care what party they're from. And any, and the whole world over, any country, any leader, anybody, that's why I said, even your neighbor, like, red flag. Mike? Yeah, yeah, no, and that's, and that's the thing, is that after 2,000 years, our faith, Christianity, has left an imprint the world over. These scriptures have not been secret. But there are some that live in clear defiance of them, that hate God. So, absolutely, that is something that, so, I was gonna kind of save that for verses 11 through, no, 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 because with the false prophet. And I think that is absolutely going to come into play, and even as I had alluded to before, you know, there's some really interesting matchups even within Islam, Islamic eschatology. So, with their prophet, who is pointing to the Mahdi to worship him, who just so happens to be Jesus. Oh, okay. I mean, you know, that's a really, that's a curveball right there. I remember the day I, like, I learned that little tidbit, I'm just like, whoa, that fits so many different things. And so, you know, once again, but it's not to go too far into the weeds into that, but how else, like, are we going to see some of these things match up? And mind you, the Lord could return in a thousand years from now. So, once again, getting away from thinking that, like, the United States is the center of the world or universe, what we're reading is not all about us, at the same time, is not just thinking that this is the end, and this is all gonna happen in our lifetime. Right? So, then, what that brings into this is not just a balanced approach in the, for the sake of compromise, no, it brings into something even more important, it's generational discipleship. Knowing that every generation after us is gonna read this same book, hopefully. And hopefully, they don't lose their heads and think that this is the end, right? And do something crazy or drastic. Or put out books and movies like Left Behind series. Just kidding. And so, there's been a couple of classes since I got a jab in, so, but, but anyways, it's still one of those things for generational discipleship. Sorry. No, I'm not. And so, so, but like, even in the generational discipleship aspect of it, is, what if that added a whole new layer of importance to how we disciple our kids, our grandkids, the people that we have shared Christ with, you know, obeying the Lord to be and make disciples, right? And for that level, that gravity of, there is going to be a time in the future when this stuff is going to happen. And will they be ready? Because, I mean, think about it, think about all the things that you have wrestled with, maybe it's with this book, or anything else in Scripture, like, theologically? Like, we're a product of previous generations and cultural systems that have evolved around that, some intentionally and some not. What is our faith gonna look like in practice? Because, I mean, everybody recognizes what we're doing here, from this morning to tonight, this does, this isn't what Christianity's always looked like, right? I mean, it's completely different than it was 50 years ago, let alone 100 years ago, 150, to it, let's just keep going back. Completely different. What's it now, let's go look in the future, what is it gonna look like then? And are those disciples of Jesus Christ going to be ready if a system like this does come about? Now, as we talked about last week, there are systems like this already around. Some would even contend that, in less authoritarian, but more in the satanic persuasion of the world, that we can be lulled to ineffectiveness by Satan in our entertainment, in our missed priorities in life. All of it, it's a system. We cannot underestimate the enemy. And that takes a new level of intention on our part to be and make disciples, to carry that forward, to carry the things that we know about this book. I mean, growing up, I didn't hear any of this. So, I mean, but it's, you know, and just reading, I mean, I think you guys have all seen the stack of books that, you know, have been read for this, and, you know, and even just from the classes that I've taken, like, there are some that, you know, are writing within very clear theological systems. Can recognize that, right? Multiple perspectives, and reading through that, and, you know, and it all finds, it kind of hits its own wall. But I think what we're talking about here with a principled approach, with that level of clarity, that is what has echoed for 2,000 years, since John penned this, since he received the vision and wrote it down for his disciples in Asia Minor, in modern day, what is modern day Turkey. So, that's the exciting part of this, that it has had a huge effect on the body of Christ. So, okay, soapbox over. Verse 8. Check out verse 8. Oh, just kidding. So, verse 7 there, with the making war on the saints. Daniel, chapter 8, verse 10, and verse 25. Those are some reference points, if you want to look at that, as well as Daniel, chapter 11, verse 36. Listen, we are gonna be done with Revelation this year. 2024 is the, we're not taking bets, because that would be wrong. And I would be wrong. But yes, Daniel would be amazing.
Took you a minute.
I know, I know. In a few years. So, I got you. Daniel, chapter 11, verse 36. And then, Daniel 7:21 is the conquering of the saints. "The little horn defeated the holy people." So, and then, Daniel 7:14 is the authority given to the little horn "over every tribe, people, language, and nation."
Work their way.
So, are we talking about capital A Antichrist, or the many Antichrists that have come?
Capital A Antichrist. And I ask that because, you know, somebody mentioned.
Absolutely. Yeah, and maybe even just a both and, right? So, I think that's absolutely possible. I think it's possible that, you know, that system is already, you know, has its roots. Maybe it goes even further back. Maybe it goes even further back, right? So, yeah, yeah, I, I, I think all of that is possible. It's me sidestepping that. No, I'm not gonna name names, that's right, that's not what we're doing in this class.
I know, but I mean, I just, like I said, I just think about it.
Well, and there's gotta be grace for that.
Yeah.
Because, you know, so, so the idea of the question here is that just within Christianity, is it possible that like, the Antichrist or beast system could come out of that? And yes, it is possible, but, you know, just for, I mean, not to, not to treat it as passe, but like, you know, for heresy, for some of the more heretical points, different, you know, groups or sects that, you know, are contributing to that, right, or spinning off new ideas. You know, I, I think there's gotta be a level of grace. If we look at like, the level of denominations that we have today, many people, and like, I mean, if you've ever looked at a chart of church history, like, the family tree of Christianity, I mean, there's pretty much one, and then it branches off at the Reformation, and then you got this whole spread on this other side. And mind you, it's way more complicated than that, but like, really, what the Protestant Reformation does, just Protestantism in general, it just, because everybody has access to the scriptures. And that has happened in countries where there's been a lot more freedom, and so there's nothing stopping us from going and starting our own church of Revelation, where we just decide to read the book of Revelation every day. We live in that freedom, we can just do that. Especially, you know, if it just takes one charismatic personality and boom, you got your own church. And that's, that's the day and age in which we live. I mean, we have celebrity pastors, you know? That's a whole thing. Thank you, social media. So, you know, I mean, that's, yeah, so, so it's, I mean, easy, easy to happen, right? But we still need to give some level of grace and not refer to everybody that disagrees with us as the Antichrist. No, but some will, and some do. I mean, there, there are denominations that will see everybody else as being Antichrist. So, and I mean, that's the stuff that, we just can't get lost in that. There's an element of grace, I mean, that we have to have towards fellow brothers and sisters in Christ. So, that's my thoughts on that. Any other follow-ups, any questions? Okay, so if you're already thinking of those denominations and the people that are still in them, just pray for them, so. Just, sometimes I wish there could be like a mirror where you guys could see your faces, right? You'd be like, yep. Get a second camera to track, what happened on the screen? I know, I know. All right, let's get through verse eight, and then we can take our break. "And all who dwell on the earth will worship him; everyone whose name has not been written from the foundation of the world in the book of life of the Lamb who has been slain." So, Mount continues, "John now describes the results of the work of the beast, to whom such awesome power has been given. The whole world, apart from those whose names are written in the Lamb's book of life, will join in worship of the beast. Jesus had foretold the coming of false Christ, who with displays of signs and wonders would deceive even the elect, if that were possible." Matthew chapter 24, verse 24. Let's go ahead and go back there, read that in a little bit of context. See, that's another thing, if we were gonna stop and study parts of Daniel, we would definitely be hitting all of that discourse and, oh man. Anybody, was anybody in the Matthew class when I talked through this one?
Probably. Been there a while.
That's, that's, that's fair. In case you haven't heard, it took, was it 11 years or 12?
I think it was like 13.
Oh, boy. Talked through the Gospel of Matthew over 13 years.
It'd be a few years before we get through this.
So, no, we're moving much quicker now. That was a very thorough study.
We were on six last week.
That's right, and we're already at eight, so. Oh, man, okay, all right, Matthew 24. You know what, I'm gonna start, this is so good, man. 21, "For then there will be a great tribulation, such as not occurred since the beginning of the world until now, nor ever will. Unless those days have been cut short, no life would have been saved, but for the sake of the elect, those days will be cut short. Then, if anyone says to you, behold, here is the Christ, or there he is, do not believe him, for false Christ and false prophets will arise, and will show great signs and wonders, so as to mislead, if possible, even the elect." Guys, come on. I mean, to your question of like, could this have happened within Christianity? That's the context for what Jesus is saying. That there are gonna be people coming that are claiming to be him, claiming to be Messiah, performing miracles and signs, signs and wonders. I mean, if we're having trouble discerning what movie to watch, how are we gonna discern this? Is this movie appropriate for me? If we have to ask that question, how are we doing this? Should I be watching this? Should I, is this YouTube video, is this, you know, is this encouraging? And, you know, like, I'm just taking like, basic entertainment for our culture, but here, Jesus is like, oh, yeah. You know, like, this is gonna deceive people. Possibly even the elect. I mean, we've just gotta up our game, right? And if not just for us, it's for future generations of believers. So, okay, all right, I got three minutes, we can do this. So, like, there's a lot of weird things going on in the news, right? Anybody hear about aliens and, you know, all this other stuff? Declassified government documents and, you know, all this, and there's these appearances and... It's crazy stuff. But who's being misled? Who's being deceived by this? I mean, is somebody doubting their faith because of it? I mean, you hear some reports and, I mean, a lot of the language sounds just like some of the biblical stuff with, in talking about demons even. I mean, there's so much going on week to week. This is not the time to be lax in our faith. This is where we have to be, like, in the Word of God, knowing, like, keep reading it. Because as things are changing around us, we are changing, and when we come back to the Word of God, we're gonna read it differently. As we see these miracles, as we see signs and wonders coming from certain people, I mean, what would you do if you saw somebody of a different faith performing miracles like that? Does it change who Jesus is? It shouldn't. Even if you've never seen a miracle in your life up until that time, does it change who Jesus is? As our Lord and Savior, as the one, as the Messiah that we look forward to, knowing full well that he is coming back to rule this world. We have to be so set in what we believe and who Jesus is, and that's what it centers on, is Jesus. Right. Okay, we left off with Matthew 24, verse 24. "So, for false Christ and false prophets will arise, and will show great signs and wonders, so as to mislead, if possible, even the elect." So, all right, scary thoughts, but fair warning from Jesus himself, right? So, Mount goes on, "Once the Roman state had taken on a religious significance, it was only natural that it should begin to demand worship. The worship of a satanically inspired perversion of secular authority is the ultimate offense against the one true God. The temptation rejected by Jesus at the outset of his public ministry reappears at the end of history in its most persuasive form, and gains the allegiance of all but the elect." The NRSV translation, "Everyone represents an unexpected change in the Greek text from the plural to the singular. The shift is perhaps intended to emphasize the individual responsibility of each one who worships the beast. They are the ones whose names have not been written in the book of life. The idea of a divine register is found as far back as Moses's encounter with God on Mount Sinai." Deuteronomy chapter 32. Let's go to Deuteronomy, you didn't see that one coming, did you? 32 and 33. "For their vine is from the vine of Sodom and from the fields of Gomorrah; their grapes are grapes of poison, their clusters bitter; their wine is the venom of serpents and the deadly poison of cobras." Oh, you know what, am I reading the... Nope, nope, I am not reading the right one. Oh, I think I wrote the wrong one down. Exodus 32, that's what it is. There it is. But now, oh, all right, all right, I'm gonna start at verse 30, just because this is so good. "On the next day Moses said to the people, you yourselves have committed a great sin." So, this is the golden calf incident, guys. "You yourselves have committed a great sin, and now I am going up to Yahweh. Perhaps I can make atonement for your sin. Then Moses returned to Yahweh and said, alas, this people has committed a great sin, and they have made a god of gold for themselves. But now, if you will forgive their sin, and if not, please blot me out from your book which you have written." Yahweh said to Moses, whoever has sinned against me, I will blot him out of my book. But now, but go now, lead the people where I told you." So, I mean, this is a whole side topic, but like, the fact that Moses puts himself on the line, like, that doesn't get enough play for, as a typological prophetic example of Jesus. He literally, literally puts himself on the line. Especially for a bunch of people that had, yeah, I mean, giving him trouble, they're gonna give him trouble over the next 40 years, but you know, like, yeah, this is, I mean, it's something. So, so there you go, first mention of a book of life, or the book in which Yahweh had written. "In the New Testament, Paul speaks of his fellow workers as those whose names are in the book of life." Philippians chapter four, verse three. "In Revelation, the designation of a book of life occurs six times." So, should, should I write those down, or is it okay if I read them off? Reference? All right, all right. So, chapter three, verse five. Chapter 13, verse eight. Chapter 17, verse eight. Chapter 20, verse 12. And this, and 15, so, chapter 20, verse 12 and 15. And chapter 21, verse 27. These are all in Revelation. Yep. "And refers to a register of the names of all those who belong to God. Here and in chapter 21, verse 27, the book of life is said to belong to the Lamb. It is through his sacrifice that life is possible." And we just read that earlier in chapter five, right? "It was by his blood, his sacrifice, that he purchased for God men of every tribe and nation." "The creation of the world refers to the creation of the visible order." It is mentioned 10 times in the New Testament, the creation of the world. "Jesus speaks of a kingdom prepared since the creation of the world." Matthew 25, verse 34. "And Paul of the believer's election before the creation of the world." Ephesians chapter one, verse four. "The problem in the immediate verse is not the meaning of the phrase, but its place in the sentence. Was it the writing of the believers' names, or the death of the Lamb that dates from the creation of the world?" Oh, dun, 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 just when you thought you were gonna be a Calvinist. So, the RSV and many of the newer translations follow the first alternative. The faithful are guarded by their election, the writing of their names in the Lamb's book of life, from being deceived by the pretensions of the Antichrist. This is said to have taken place at the creation of the world. Revelation 17:8, a parallel verse, would support this interpretation. However, the premise that John must be absolutely, must be absolutely consistent in his literary expression is questionable. There's no particular reason why he should be denied the freedom to use a given phrase in several ways. It is better in this case to follow the order of the Greek syntax and read the Lamb that was slain from the creation of the world. "That is, the death of Christ was a redemptive sacrifice decreed in the councils of eternity." That was a fun phrase, Mount gets points for that one. "It is worth noting that names may be blotted out of the book of life." Chapter three, verse five. "Hence, having one's name in the register at the beginning of creation would offer something less than complete security in the time of trial." Oh, I can read it again. "So, it is worth noting that names may be blotted out of the book of life." Chapter three, verse five. "Hence, having, having one's name in the register at the beginning of creation would offer something less than complete security in the time of trial."
Which would seem to go along with Matthew.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, I, that, and, and that's absolutely, I mean, the take that, yeah. I agree with that. So, any, any other questions about that? Yeah, no, it, it does, and it's, it, so the question is, you know, does this play into the whole predestination discussion? And it does, to some degree, and there are different understandings of that, even throughout the New Testament, even now Paul uses that terminology, and he does more than anybody else. And there's reasons for that, the Pharisees just so happened to be really big into that. But what's interesting is the way Paul uses the language, it's much more in a collective sense. it's much more in a collective sense instead of an individual sense. So that it's a collective group. So, since the plan was to send Jesus to be that atoning sacrifice, but you had to believe to receive that. By creating that opportunity, he therefore created two groups, those that would accept and those who would not. So that is the predestined opportunity, or the collective saved. But also creating the collective unsaved. You just have the choice of which one you belong to. So, there you go. But if you believe now that you are just part of the elect and good to go, I pray you live that out, and it'll sort itself out in the end. Just don't be the frozen chosen. So, that's, that's something to avoid. You've never heard that, frozen chosen? What? Oh, so, okay, what I'm referring to is hyper-Calvinism. And so, basically, like, they take a lot of this predestination to the nth degree where, I don't have to evangelize, I don't have to make disciples, I don't have to do anything because I believe that I'm already part of the elect, and God's gonna find his own elect. He doesn't need my help. Frozen chosen. So, they are happy to, like, have the holy huddle, and that's it. And even that's a formality, so.
On the other hand, I believe they were not written, so they're just part of John.
Yeah, they write everybody else off because, oh, you obviously aren't in the book of life. So, yeah, I mean, like I said, it's a theological extreme. But that's where theology has consequences. So.
What was the original question somebody was asking on Zoom?
Uh, just, oh, predestination, and is that...
Was it part of this whole discussion?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, so it comes from verse eight, Revelation 13, verse eight. "All who dwell on the earth will worship him, everyone whose name has not been written from the foundation of the world in the book of life of the Lamb who has been slain." And so what we were reading from Mounts was that, that phrasing is kind of backwards, where it's the, basically, the plan of, you know, from the foundation of the world for the Lamb to be slain, which gives the right for people to be written in the book of life. Boy, that changes the whole understanding of it, doesn't it? So. Yeah. So here, too, Keener has quite a bit to say. Remember, Keener is presenting much more of the historical contextual perspective on these verses. So, Antiochus Epiphanes, one of the earliest candidates for the Antichrist sort of figure, second century B.C., "had brought all the nations in his part of the world under his authority as one people," 1 Maccabees, chapter one, verses 41 through 43, "and demanded the worship normally considered due rulers in the east." The Romans had likewise united much of the ancient world, and most of the ruler worshiping eastern empire now worshipped the emperor. So, that's something that kind of got imported from the east, is the worshiping of the emperors. So that didn't start in the West, that actually started in the East and then got imported. All the earth was used, in other texts of John's time, to mean all the civilized earth, all that was under a mighty empire, as opposed to outside the sphere of Rome, Parthia, and the northern barbarians. This verse indicates the Jewish doctrine of predestination, which many Jewish people held alongside the doctrine of free will. Many of the early writers never saw enough tension between God's sovereignty and human responsibility to contrast them, although the idea of God's foreknowledge may have helped. So, once again, Keener is kind of doing a strict reading of the text without getting into the Greek. Something that, and that's, side note, that's why I chose to get Mounts's commentary on Revelation, because as you're talking about, like, Greek authority, like, Mounts is kind of the guy. Like, he really is. So, for Mounts to say, like, hey, this phrasing would be better this way, he totally has the authority to say that. So. If, case in point, for like, why are we reading from Mounts? Like, that's why. Because really, some, I mean, I do enjoy a lot of his commentary, but it's that right there, getting into the Greek, that's why I want his voice as a part of this. So. But that's also what I was referencing before. There was a Jewish doctrine of Pharisee, of a predestination, and that was found among the Pharisees quite often. So, but, exactly what we've already been talking about with that whole collective sense, that was their idea. Like, that does go back to the Pharisees. So, when, we can't just think, you know, when it says predestination, oh, that was it. It was much more, there was a tension there between free will and foreknowledge and predestination that kind of works itself out. So, basically, what I was saying, as Paul was writing in a collective sense, that, that's how that fits together. Is everybody, is everybody still following, still tracking? So. Once again, I wish there was a mirror, like, oh, that's what it looked like. Yes. Alright, so, let's go ahead, nine and 10. Well, and you know what, like, I mean, we will, you know, there will be a prominent female figure coming up. And so, so, you know, that's where, like, I mean, this isn't just a masculine-centered book. Like, there, you know, yeah, so, so we'll see that. In, you know, even in the Greek, there, you know, there would have been a gender attached to that, or even a neutral option, so. Yeah, I'll, I'll do a little bit digging into that, because that's worth, that's worth noting. Absolutely. Yeah, thank you. Alright, verses nine and 10. "If anyone has an ear, let him hear; if anyone is destined for captivity, to captivity he goes; if anyone kills with the sword, with the sword he must be killed. Here is the perseverance and the faith of the saints." Oh, boy, here we go. So. Alright, so nine and 10. So, the contemporary equivalent of verse nine would be the military command, "Now hear this." It occurs in each of the seven letters and recalls the familiar expression of Jesus, "He who has ears, let him hear," notably Matthew, chapter 11, verse 15, for example. The idiom could point in either direction, but what is primarily, but what it primarily does is to alert the reader to the importance of the proverbial statement that follows. So nobody makes the important statement and says, "Now hear this," right? Now hear this, and then, there you go. So that is what it is leading into. So, so the epigrammatic style of verse 10 has resulted in a number of scribal attempts to clarify the meaning by altering the text. "The reading that best accounts for the origin of the others when translated literally into English is..." Oh, I could have written this one. "If anyone into captivity, into captivity this one goes; if anyone by a sword to be killed, this one by a sword to be killed." So once again, that kind of changes the dynamic of the text. Actually, let me, let me write this out real quick, just so that you can kind of see that and take that in. That is, if you can see this. Once again, kind of a difference in understanding the text. Before, it was like, hey, if you put up a fight, you're definitely gonna die by the sword. But here, and then even, I'm gonna read here from Mounts's tran, so Mounts actually did his own translation for his commentary. So. As most scholars, I mean, like, when they're getting into a book, they're retranslating it, so there will be some unique pieces. Alright. So, it seems that the New American Standard has included the word "is destined." Does anybody else have that in their translation? What, what translation? NLT has destined. Does anybody not have that? NIV or ESV? Okay, so, once again, maybe a level of theological projection. So, taking from a couple verses back, somebody says, oh, well, hey, let's go ahead and throw this in here, because that's what it's implied. Right? But, obviously, as we're reading this, it reads differently. So, Mounts goes on, "Such terse-ness is not immediately clear, especially to the later reader of Revelation. At issue is, who is taken into captive, who is taken captive and killed, and by whom? The NIV correctly interprets the text in context to refer to those whose names are written in the Lamb's book of life. In view of the impending persecution at the hand of the beast, it is certain that captivity and death by the sword await those who faithfully follow the Lamb." Oh, sunshine and rainbows. "There is a certain grim reality that lies ahead for believers. They will be taken into captivity, and many, many will be put to death by the sword. As their master met death at the hands of a hostile secular power, so also they will meet the same fate. This reading of the Greek text stresses the inevitability of persecution and death for the faithful. This appeal to loyal endurance suits the context and tone of the entire Revelation, and further is supported by Jeremiah 15:2 and 43:11." So, we'll go to Jeremiah now. Uh, let's see, first we'll go Jeremiah 15, verse two. I'll start at verse one. "Then Yahweh said to me, even though Moses and Samuel were to stand before me, my heart would not be with this people, and send them away from my presence, and let them go. And it shall be that when they say to you, 'Where should we go?', then you are to tell them, thus says Yahweh, 'Those destined for death to death, and those destined for the sword to the sword, and those destined for famine to famine, and those destined for captivity to captivity.'" Now, NIV, NLT, or, I'm sorry, NIV, ESV, did you guys have the word destined in that translation? Okay, now, everybody can see, like, it's kind of what's implied. Right, so, so, New American Standard is just literally, like, spelling that out. So, Jeremiah 43, let's go there next. Maybe this one will be more encouraging. Sorry. I hope so. Don't get your hopes up too high. Uh, let's see. "Thus says Yahweh, Sabbath Ode, the God of Israel, behold, I am going to send and get Nebuchadnezzar, the king of Babylon, my servant, and I am going to set his throne right over these stones that I have hidden, and he will spread his canopy over them. He will also come and strike the land of Egypt. Those who are meant for death will be given over to death, and those for captivity to captivity, and those for the sword to the sword." So. So, definitely, with Jeremiah's prophetic ministry, that is what he was carrying for the word of the Lord. Alright. So, obviously, uh, you know, there's a plan in place. I don't know if we have to necessarily like it, but, you know. So, "Two other less probable readings warrant our attention. One refers both couplets to the persecutors of the church by adding a verb that makes the first line read, if any person leads a believer into captivity, into captivity, that person, himself or herself, will go." Thus, the verse would be stressing that the enemies of God's people would be requited for their persecution of believers in the same form they had employed, captivity for captivity, sword for sword. Whoa, that changes the whole verse, doesn't it? The other reading is that of Sinaticus, following the new King James. "He who kills with the sword must be killed with the sword." This corresponds to the words of Jesus in Matthew, chapter 26, verse 52. "All who draw the sword will die by the sword." So there's a connection. "The first couplet would teach that the believer must accept what God has ordained, and the second would warn against any attempt on the part of the church to defend itself by the use of force." A scholar named Barclay writes, "It is an intolerable paradox to defend the gospel of the love of God by using the violence of man." I was gonna make a crusader joke, but we'll move on, so. Too soon? "The conclusion therefore is that there is need of endure, for endurance and faith on the part of Christ's people. When the impending persecution breaks upon the church, believers will need to meet it with steadfast endurance and an unwavering faith. John's warnings about the perils that faced God's people serve to prepare them for the difficult days that lay ahead. At the close of the age, it will be to the church's advantage to be fully informed of the increased activity of Satan. The view that God will remove his people from the suffering of those days creates a faulty expectation that will work against their need for patient endurance and faithfulness." Bless you. So. Uh, the only thing that Keener actually had to say was referring back to Jeremiah 15 and Jeremiah 43, so. So, this judgment would encourage the martyred saints concerning their vindication. So. Actually, so, yeah, I guess Keener presents something a little bit different. The language is from Jeremiah 15:2 and 43:11, where God promises to exterminate most of the Israelites by various means and to enslave the others in captivity. It's what we read, right? "But the judgment here is against all nations who have rebelled against God." So this judgment would encourage the martyred saints concerning their vindication. So. So this is much more of the overarching act of judgment against, though. So maybe that alternative reading, you know, anyone who takes somebody into captivity, into captivity, they're gonna go. Anyone who's killing with the sword, well, they're going to be killed. So, so maybe the persecutors. So that's interesting. I'm surprised that Keener didn't provide a little bit more information to that. Yeah. So what, what are your thoughts? What are your reactions on that? Processing? Just a reminder. You're not on the losing side. We just need to redefine what winning looks like. Winning is not in this life. That's why we can talk about how we've already won. So this is the whole idea of just recognizing that, that you've already given up your life. Right? If you're already dead, then you don't have to worry about dying. If you've already given up your life, well, one, it would just be foolish to try to take that back. So now, you've already been given the orders in which and how to live and what to do in this life while you're still here with view to eternity. So. That's a lot to reconcile. Especially as you are already thinking about what time you got to get up to go to work tomorrow. Got to punch the clock. What's this like in view of eternity? Is this the beast system? Just kidding. So, so, you know, there is, there's a lot to reconcile here. The, I mean, this section, because we're not even done with the chapter, this section has ended on a really heavy note regardless of how, regardless of how you read it. I think both ways it's super heavy. Andrew. Different translations. Well, they're referencing other sources. Did I understand that right?
So there's, there are different Greek traditions?
Yes. Yeah. So. Not different Greek tradition, like, not, there's not a variance in the Greek text, but there is a difference in the translation and understanding of the Greek text. So. I'm sure somebody from a different language trying to translate some of our idioms from Indiana would have a field day. Right? So actually, I just said a field day. Right? That's the funny thing. Like, you try, the more you talk, you're just like, oh, yeah, that'd be weird. I mean, just random, right? I mean. You know, it's just that, that blank look if my kids ask like, field day? What does that mean? So, so there you go. And so even as we're reading the text, some of these scholars and, yeah. So, but if you're looking for resources on those, I think Mounts cited a few of those where you could find them. So. But, yeah. So, like I said, that ends in a very heavy way. It's something for us to reconcile and it's what is the priorities in our life? Right? I mean, that, and that's the gut check. And remember the context in which John is writing. It's to a persecuted church. It's a church that has already got a little bit of persecution, but then there's more to come. And his greatest concern is that they stay faithful to the end and continue passing along the faith to their disciples. That every disciple is making disciples. Why? Oh, let's go back to the persecution factor. Because what if? What if persecution comes? What if? Just systematically start trying to eradicate Christianity of just the disciple makers? What would be left for the disciples to know? That next generation of believers? How much would our kids know? How much would the student community and kids community know if every adult was taken out? Do they have enough to pass along the faith to the next generation? That's the work we need to be about. It's not trying to avoid captivity or the sword. It's making disciples. That is the number one priority. So. Yeah. And I mean, you know, that completely lines up with even the message this morning. Just a lot of those things wrestle through is what kind of life are we living? What is our number one priority? And this all goes back to the conversation of the last couple of weeks too. Because, I mean, really, you just have that line. You have the beast system, Antichrist. It's the world. And over here, we have Christ. Now, there are things of the world, right? I mean, we have a house to reside in. We have food to eat. We need clothing, all the Matthew 25 things, right? And. Those are things of the world, technically. But how much of those do we need? That's the wrestling. And really, you could just write the world like right here in between. But then there's a lot of things that the world is telling us that we need that is all a part of a system. And I mean, really, that's something just in kind of critical thinking is looking at where we're at in this time and in this country and recognizing it's, it's all a system. Go to a different country and you're going to encounter a totally different system. That's the reality. And it's good to see that because you're like, oh, you can ask the question, which system do I like better? Maybe I want to go there and stay. But then, what we should be asking and kind of in that context and that line of thought is what does the system of Christ look like? And how can I live that to the fullest? Right? I mean, I think we all know when we live our fullest for the world, we're just, we end up empty. There, there's no end. I mean, it doesn't fill that hole in our heart, right? I mean, that's why most of us came to Christ is there was a crash and burn period and then we were just like, oh, I ain't got anything left. Like, and the Lord's like, hey, here, I got good news for you. Can we go all in to this? And all in to such a degree that when persecution comes, that we stand firm? That's the message of Revelation. That's the challenge of Revelation from generation to generation of disciples of Jesus Christ. And it's with that sobering thought, we will conclude our session.